Brian.
Hey Lisa.
Hey Lisa.
I'm gonna begin in just about one minute. Hi Natalie, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Jason.
Hi, Jason.
Hi, Josephine, hi Leslie, hello, everybody else.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to convene Watertown's Board of Education meeting for Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Dr. Ramos? Dr. Ramos has some special words and remembrance of a student that we lost. So I'd like to pause and put that on hold until he's able to join us. I ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Mikowski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski, Mrs. Davidson?
Ms. Bristol? Mr. Mikowski?
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi?
Here.
Ms. Wilk? Ms. Crotty?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Ms. Eastman?
Here.
Mr. Malaguti?
Here.
Mr. Flaherty?
Here.
And Ms. Lindstrom?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson, moving on to item A, minutes, is there a motion to accept the minutes of the November twenty, excuse me, the November ninth, two thousand and twenty regular board meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to Special Board Meeting from November twenty-third, is there a motion to accept the minutes of the November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty Special Board Meeting as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of the November twenty-third regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Just wanna check really quickly, Dr. Ramos, are you with us this evening yet? Okay, we're gonna skip F for now in hopes that we can do that while Dr. Ramos is present and move on to item G, report from Student Council Representative Natalie Lindstrom. Natalie?
Good evening, everyone. Polk, as hard as it may seem to believe, last week Polk's school closed out their first trimester of the school year and shared students' first trimester report cards with families. While we know it hasn't always been easy, distance learning seems to be going well overall. Polk is pleased to be offering more live instruction and support for students in this learning model and love getting to see their kids every day. They are so grateful for all this help, support, and kind words families are offering to their children and to us. In conjunction with John Trumbull and Judson, Polk's staff will hold a reverse parade on Friday, December eighteenth, from two to three. We're excited to welcome our families to come say hello and wish everyone a happy holiday before we close for winter break. Judson, Mrs. Raymond is incredibly proud of Judson's staff members, students, and families as we transitioned to remote learning. At this time last year, this concept of remote learning would have been inconceivable. While this is so frustrating for many of us, it really is such a feat that we are meeting head-on together. Mrs. Raymond began live meetings with each grade level for daily morning announcements. It has been such a pleasure to see all the students. Report cards for our first trimester were made available on Monday, December seventh. Our Student Council is hosting a Spirit Week which began today and will end on Friday, December eighteen, with a different theme each day. Spirit Week will conclude with a parade at Judson's School. We are hoping our families will take a moment to come say hello to the faculty and staff of Judson's School from two PM until three PM. In lieu of the annual Giving Tree, our staff members have purchased gift cards to donate to our town's social services for our families who are in need this year. SWIFT, the SWIFT Unified Sports Teams recently found a sweet way to get together and participate in an after-school activity at school. On November seventeenth, members of the Unified Program, including a mix of general ed and special ed students, had a great time playing indoor bocce in the gymnasium. For some, it was their first time playing this backyard game. This was a part of the sports challenges set up by the CIAC and Unified Sports due to the cancellation of fall tournaments. We are hoping to hold two more Unified Challenges this winter once we return to in-person learning. At SWIFT, we value our relationship with local veterans, and we have traditionally participated each year in the annual Pearl Harbor Remembrance Ceremony held at the Oakville Grove. This year, students remembered the significant day in American history in a different way. Students viewed a number of archival videos of the events of December seventh, nineteen forty-one, and watched short documentary interviews with survivors and eyewitnesses of the tragic events of that day which will live in infamy. Discussions followed in each class about the reasons nations go to war as part of our curriculum unit on the causes of the American Revolution. Watertown High School, the WHS Science Department has been developing innovative ways to continue students' experiences with laboratory activities. A team of students have been videotaping the laboratory procedures, another student wrote the script of the lab activity, and another student edited the video so that it was clear and easy to understand. The department hopes to create a video library of lab activities for use in future years as well. On Tuesday, December eighth, WHS teachers participated in a professional learning activity about individual conferencing across the content areas. Individual conferencing allows teachers to provide specific instruction to students and it encourages students to articulate the steps they use to complete a task, as well as explain their successes in areas of struggle. The purpose of Tuesday's professional learning was to get teachers to practice our conferencing protocol with each other using an object they created with Play-Doh. This activity allowed teachers to have a bit of fun while they became accustomed to the conferencing template, playing the roles of student and teacher in their practice. Teachers have a minimum number of individual conferences with students to complete in upcoming weeks.
Thank you, Natalie. Does anybody, the board members have any questions for Natalie this time? Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna go back to item B, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Ramos.
Okay, thank you so much, and good evening, everyone, can you hear me? Yes, okay. First, we would like to acknowledge the loss of one of our students, Catherine Schaefer. Catherine was a junior at Watertown High School, passed away at home on Sunday, November twenty-ninth. Catherine was a kind, caring, and compassionate young woman with a superb sense of style and a fun witty sense of humor. She was a member of the Watertown High School Chapter of Best Buddies, a club that encourages meaningful friendships between students with intellectual and developmental disabilities and non-disabled peers. Caitlin excelled at making her fellow Best Buddies members feel included, cared for, and valued by the high school community. Caitlin was an avid reader and enjoyed a variety of books found in her homes, away from home, being in the Watertown High School Library and Media Center and in the middle school at SWIFT. This lifelong passion for books provided Caitlin with many perspectives about the world and contributed to her great empathy for adults and peers alike. Brave and honest participant in the high school's Anti-Defamation League workshop last year, and her insights about being an adolescent in two thousand and twenty made the workshop more meaningful for both members and all of the students who were in attendance. Caitlin was a recipient of a Watertown High School Good News Call recognition for being one of the first students to offer help to her teachers with tasks and for volunteering her time to make sure the school library ran smoothly. Most importantly, Caitlin cared deeply for her family and friends, often mentioning her mother and grandmother in conversation about how much they meant to her. Our school district's most sincere thoughts and condolences are with Caitlin's family at this very difficult time. I would ask you now, please, to observe with me a moment of silence.
Thank you, Dr. Ramos.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F in the agenda, recognition and award. Dr. John Ramos has served as the interim superintendent for Watertown Public Schools since August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, and right from the start, he quickly became an integral part of the community. Unfortunately, his time with us will come to a close as of tomorrow, December fifteenth. While COVID-nineteen has ended his time with us just a little earlier than anticipated, as you can see, Dr. Ramos is doing well. We are grateful for his service to Watertown Public Schools at such a critical and transitional time in our district. Dr. Ramos took the reins when we needed him most and immediately provided a stabilizing force during extraordinary circumstances. Given the pandemic and its impact on our community, Dr. Ramos had to make critical decisions from day one, and he did so with integrity and thoughtful expertise. He immediately focused on partnering our leadership team, partnering with our leadership team, to provide comprehensive guidance on the reopening of our schools. His dedication to our students, staff, and families was nothing short of incredible, and he did not allow anything to compromise the safety and well-being of our community. I do not know that there was anybody else who could have handled the enormity of what he was asked to do at the time that he was asked to do it with such grace and poise and dedication as Dr. Ramos has, and I know my colleagues want to extend their gratitude as well. Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. John, you and I both had different-looking glasses and a little less gray in our hair when we first met. The first time you came into town and became our superintendent of schools. And I had the pleasure of then following after you left Watertown Bridgeport, you served our state as Deputy Commissioner of Education, but most importantly, when Watertown and Oakville needed your help, you came back again. And I know you didn't really leave, because you've been living here, but I just wanna say, the, I came so close to getting to walk in and shake your hand in your office when I came aboard for this brief stint on the Board of Education. But there are people, not just in Watertown and Oakville, there are people, kids who were probably when you first came here, who've got kids of their own, who are doing whatever they're doing, preparing for Chris to take care of their family, and they're all better off because you touched their lives. And that's not just for Watertown and Oakville, that's every place that you've gone. And so, I just want to have a chance to say that I look forward to giving a handshake and a hug and a pat on the back when COVID is done. Thanks for coming back, thanks for everything you did for people whose names you'll probably never know, but whose lives you made a stamp on, for always. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Mrs. Rinaldi?
Hey, Dr. Ramos, thank you. You came in to help us at a time when most retired superintendents would have run for the hills. Not only did you accept the challenge, but you led us through these crazy times without a hitch. I just wanna thank you again for your service to the Watertown School Systems, and I hope you enjoy your second, well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Mrs. Rosa?
Dr. Ramos, although it's been a few months, short months, that you have been here with us, your guidance and your calmness that you have shown us all through this pandemic has been unbelievable and amazing. I just wanted to say thank you for all your work and your dedication here in the Watertown Schools, and I wish you a lot of luck on your next retirement.
Mrs. Eastman?
Dr. Ramos, I feel like if you wanted to simply rest on your laurels after this tenure, you have enough laurels to do so. What a job to come in and handle such a complex and literally dangerous temporary position. Word that comes to mind for me was thinking about how well you did, how well you guided us through the last several months in Seaford. I won't speak for everyone, but I never once felt a moment of concern that, with all that you faced, taking on this job and carrying it out with such professionalism and abilities. Thank you so much, it's a pleasure.
Wow, thank you all so much, so helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. Mr. Mikowski? You're not done yet, Mr. Makowski. Mr. Mikowski?
I could tell Dr. Ramos just loves and cherishes the attention. You know, I can't say any better than my colleagues, Dr. Ramos, we were truly blessed to have you at the time that we needed you most, so hoping that you and your family find the same blessings that you brought to us, thank you for all that you did.
Thank you. Mr. Malaguti?
Dr. Ramos, I wanted to extend a sincere thank you to you for your service to Watertown. You stepped in and provided steadfast leadership when we needed it most. Challenged by adversity never seen before, you handled yourself in each obstacle with a unwavering calmness that set the tone for all. I consider myself fortunate to have served on a few subcommittees with you as well, which is where my appreciation and respect grew further. You have a unique gift of being able to choose the perfect words for each situation in person you speak with. This talent made it easy for us to conquer challenging tasks together as a team. I know I speak not only for myself, but the entire board in town and Watertown in saying, "Thank you, sir." Thank you for your stewardship during these challenging times, wishing you all the best on your second retirement, Doc. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Dr. Ramos, it was just four months ago, long four months ago, I bet, for you, that you answered my call on behalf of the Board of Education. And here we are tonight honoring you for your outstanding dedication and service to Watertown Public Schools. We do have a plaque that I wish we could have given you in person, but I'll have to deliver it to you instead. We thank you for everything that you have given us in your service, and we wish you only the best in the years to come. Know that on behalf of the entire community, you will always have a home in Watertown and in Watertown Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you so, so much. May I say something?
Of course.
So I'm, first of all, deeply humbled and so appreciative for everything that's been said. It hardly seems possible that a journey that began in April of twenty, of two thousand and two is coming to a formal end tonight. But here we are. I just want to thank this Board of Education. I wanna thank you, Ms. Crotty, and thank you, Board of Education members, for the opportunity to serve and for your confidence. Thank you too for your professionalism and sacrifice of service. You are a class act. And I wanna thank those Board members as well who preceded you, including those that I had the opportunity to serve under during my time in my first tenure. Many thanks to the faculty, staff, administrators of Watertown. The same dedication to students, families, and each other that I saw on display in two thousand and two remains the extraordinary work culture here today. Thank you for what you do. I wanna thank you, students, families, town officials, and our beloved community for continuing to reach for the very best that is in us all. Perfect? No. But aspiring, intentional, and purposefully growing. I only wish the time, these last few months, was such that I could have come to know each of you better. Finally, I wanna single out the amazing leaders and staff at Central Office. You are exceptional. And administrate, admin, at least, Elise Taylor, you are, as they say, the best. Thank you. And may all favors shine on you, both in the immediate future and longer term. Watertown.
Thank you, Dr. Ramos. And I know, I know you mean every bit of what you have said, so we appreciate that. I'm gonna put the ball right back in your court for one last time as you give your superintendent's recommendations and report.
Okay. Just give me one moment here to collect myself. Okay. It appears, Madam Chair, that there are no appointments for the evening, and so we're going to move right into the next item. I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you. So item I, items of discussion, interim superintendent. As we know, as a district, an interim superintendent is necessary to maintain all district functions in a proper and seamless manner. And Dr. Ramos and I are pleased to recommend this evening that the Board of Education appoint Watertown High School Principal, Dr. Janet Parlato, to fill the role of interim superintendent effective Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Prior to her appointment as Watertown High School Principal in July of two thousand and nineteen, Dr. Parlato was our Assistant Superintendent and Director of Curriculum and Instruction since two thousand and thirteen, and she also served as interim superintendent for seven weeks in two thousand and eighteen. Before coming to Watertown, Dr. Parlato spent twenty years in Burling Public Schools as both a teacher and a building administrator. Dr. Parlato's breadth of administrative experience will aid in her ability to simultaneously continue in her position as the high school principal and will provide us with an effective seamless transition from December fifteenth until a new superintendent begins. Dr. Ramos, do you have any comments?
Yes, I am, we had a meeting today with all the administrators to discuss this transition, and it was very clear to me that the administrative team has confidence in Dr. Parlato. I know that I do. We're very excited that she's both able and willing to step into the role. And, and I'm very confident about what the Board of Education is endeavoring upon, not just in terms of this next step, but in the next steps, which I hope I can comment on a little later.
Thank you, Dr. Ramos. Do board members have any questions or comments in regards to our recommendation to appoint Janet Parlato our interim superintendent? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to item B, Superintendent Search Update. I am very happy to report that the Superintendent Search Committee has concluded its work and has selected a new superintendent of schools. The announcement will be made once the candidate's district is properly notified and we reach the final stages of the process. I anticipate that the Board will be able to vote on and name the new superintendent at a special remote meeting of the Board of Education on Monday, December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, at six thirty PM. I would like to thank Lisa Feckety, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Mary Lou Lurz, Administrators Union President and SWIFT Middle School Principal, Terry Baldwin, Watertown Educators Association President and SWIFT Middle School Teacher, for accepting the Board's invitation to join us on the search committee and working side by side with us throughout this entire process. There is no question that they went above and beyond for their district in this endeavor, balancing the incredible workload they currently carry on top of dedicating themselves to the superintendent hiring process over the last two months. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I thank you for that. Dr. Ramos, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Yes, simply this, I mentioned earlier that the administrative team, I met with them earlier, and folks are very supportive of Janet Parlato, and part of that has to do with the fact that, you know, this is, this is a group of administrators that represent iron. I mean, these folks are about the work, they're dedicated to the work, and they're dedicated first and foremost to our students and families and staff, and then, and then, of course, to one another. It is said that iron sharpens iron. Doesn't do any good for iron to hang out with wood. Iron sharpens iron, and I think that what the Board has done in creating this transition and in bringing in this new superintendent is, is intensify that iron and make the iron that much stronger. And I only see wonderful things happening in the system for the students who are here today and certainly for the students of tomorrow. So I just wanna commend the Board and everyone who's been involved in the process for your willingness to, to be the people you are and stand in the gap and to do, as my friends in Cutter would say, "Do the need." So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Ramos. So just to recap for the public, we will have Dr. Parlato voted on this evening to be appointed as the interim superintendent should the Board approve, and then at a meeting next week on Monday evening, December twenty-first, we hope to announce to the public our new superintendent of schools and that person's start date. Moving on to item J in the agenda, our first round of public participation. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the Board this evening? If so, please state your name and your street address. Last call for our first round of public participation. Any members of the public wish to address the Board this evening? Okay, moving on to item K, communication. Madam Secretary, Mrs. Rinaldi?
Hi, Madam Chair. The Board received a letter from Sage Phillips, a member of the Penobscot Nation, one of the four tribes belonging to the Wabanaki peoples with homelands located in the state of Maine, and Amanda Benedict, teacher at Taft School and parent of John Trembo, primary school student, both expressing their concerns for the Watertown Indian mascot and their recommendations to the Board of Ed to change it. The Board of Education also received a letter from Brandy Lee Sawyer Emmons. Brandy is of Native American descent, a parent of a Watertown High School student, and proudly supports the Indian mascot at Watertown High School and recommends that the Indian mascot not be changed. These letters were sent to all Board of Ed members through email. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vinaldi. Moving on to item L, committee reports. Back to you, Mrs. Vinaldi, is there anything from Curriculum and Instruction?
Not at this time.
Okay, and on behalf of Janelle Wilk, who is caring for a lot of the ones this evening, there is nothing on the policy in the book. Mrs. Bristol, who is not feeling well this evening, I will report that there is no budget in funding for the report. Nothing from Facility? And to you, Mr. Mikowski, governance and engagement?
No report tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Moving on to item M, report from the Board Chair. I have already said everything that I wanted to say this evening about Dr. Ramos and our search committee and about welcoming Dr. Parlato. Moving on to item N, action items, adoption of items to be approved by consent. Is there a motion for item one, to approve the appointment of Dr. Janet Parlato as interim superintendent of schools?
Yes, Madam Chair, I moved that the Board appoint Dr. Janet Parlato as the interim superintendent of schools effective December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, through the start date of a new superintendent of schools at an additional amount of one hundred fourteen dollars and ninety-three cents per day on top of her current salary.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Is there a second?
Yes, Madam Chair, I second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Dr. Parlato, on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank you for accepting this responsibility to ensure stability in the district and for being there for us when we needed you. So thank you very much, and I see that you're here this evening, and I'm very glad that you could be here to see yourself be appointed interim. So thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Moving on to item two, is there a motion to table for consideration to approve an appointment of a superintendent? Just need someone to so moved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? The motion is tabled. Moving on to item O, future agenda items and Board member comments. Do board members have any comments or suggested agenda items they'd like to make at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our last. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Mikowski?
Sorry, you know, I think it's a very special time of year. First of all, I want to, as was stated earlier by Dr. Ramos, I want to thank Carrie, Lisa, and Mary Lou for their involvement and guidance and input in the Superintendent Search Committee. You know, their voice is so instrumental in, you know, how we as a board look at the district, and I just want to express my utmost appreciation for all that they do day in and day out, but for going above and beyond and joining us. I wanted to also, you know, have a short remembrance today in honor of those that lost their lives at Sandy Hook eight years ago. You know, twenty-six souls were taken from us, so let's remember to, you know, hug our children and do everything we can, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski, for that important reminder. Any other members of the public, excuse me, any other board members wish to suggest an agenda item or have any comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, Madam Chair, I moved that the Board go into executive session for the purpose of a possible discussion concerning an attorney-client communication related to the Board of Education's role and responsibilities in regard to school mascot decisions. Attending the executive session will be Dr. John Ramos, Dr. Janet Parlato, Leslie Karati, Rob Mikowski, Brian Flaherty, Josephine Rosa, Cindy Eastman, Jason Malaguti, Jessica Ritter, Tyler Bischoff, and myself, Kathy Vinaldi.
Thank you, Mrs. Vinaldi. Is there a second?
I can.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The Board is now in executive session and should follow the link that was sent to you for executive session. The public portion of this meeting has concluded. Thank you, everybody, and good night.
Good night.